Happy New Year. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the first edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session for 2021. We're excited to have you here today. Joined by founder Greg Kilwin, we have Jess and Colin on the call here today as well. Hi, guys.
Hello, hello. Happy New Year.
Hello, everyone.
Really excited to see everyone here today. Looking forward to an exciting turnout. We are going to be doing live website reviews today. We're going to talk a little bit about mindset around getting yourself in gear for the new year and making this the year you want it to be. But most importantly, we're really going to get into rolling up our sleeves and getting the work done. Because if there's one thing I could say you should do this year and leave in 2020 behind you, it is sitting and watching training that you don't intend to do anything with. So what I want to encourage you to do is set an intention to come here, learn something, and then go do something with it today. And make that the case for anything that you sit down to consume with your brain on your butt in front of a screen. Make sure it's something that you do something with. So if I could make like one thing that if I could say, make this your resolution, I would say, make that your resolution. It's really easy when we're learning new things to get caught up in in all of the minutia and get stalled during the headlights. And the purpose of this call really is for us to get together and blow through whatever it is that you feel is standing in your ways that you can go and get the work done to achieve your goals using us as a tool and a platform to get that done for you. So if you're brand new, you've never seen us before. Hi, welcome. We love you. You'll see a lot more of us. We're here every Thursday at noon Eastern unless it's a holiday here in the US. And we are also available, as many of you know, in the inbox when you guys need support. We've got a wonderful team that loves on and supports you guys where that is concerned. And of course, these are opportunities on these live calls for you to come and learn, but more importantly, to get into action. So today, we are getting into action with five website reviews. And we are also going to be taking questions. So if you came here today and you're stuck on something, if you need help with something, or if there's something maybe you don't understand about our platform or how a feature works, feel free to use this time that's available while we're here live. A team will be in the chat working with you. And I'll be doing live reviews of websites built on our platform. These are these are websites that our users have made, which is really exciting. Going over things to make sure that functionality links are working properly. And of course, reviewing things like copywriting, making sure that when people arrive at your website, it is actually something that's going to work effectively for you. So thank you to everyone who raised their hand and decided to get a review today. If you go to get oiling.com/website review, you can sign up for a future live review at any point in time. But today, I would like to start with a co-sayer. Are you here? Would you please raise your hand? I would like to bring you out and talk. All right, let's see. I've got huh, you have an older version of Zoom. Okay, so I'm going to make you a panelist. So this should allow you to come out. Hi. I think you're muted.
Hello, how are you?
Hey, good to chat with you.
Happy new calendar, everyone.
I love that. Happy new calendar. All right. So tell us a little bit about what you're looking to learn from the review today. What kind of advice you're looking for on your site?
So this is my second review. And I made some changes and I missed some changes last night and I missed some changes and changes. So originally I had three things that were going to be attacking for my back signal and I'm narrowing it down to just one. And I want to make sure I actually use one of the new templates. So I want to make sure everything looks good. And then I had some problems with the template and the weights. So I kind of deleted two, three of the lengths and just using one of them. I just want to make sure everything looks good. And it flows well and you know, just an overall review.
Okay, excellent. So just so I'm clear, the the main page that you want to use, is it called home three on your site and in your pages? Okay, cool. All right. So I'm going to first, I'm going to I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and show everybody what's published here. And then we can go in and make any kind of editing changes that we might need to. All right. So first, I would recommend if you're going to use a background here that has a really high vibrancy and saturation of color, that you choose a significant contrast in the color of font that you use. Or you decrease the vibrance of the image before you upload it to our platform. So this could mean like in Canva, adding a like a color over the top of it or decreasing the transparency of of an image. Or alternately, you could also in your editor, actually take your text and give it a background. Let me show you what that could look like. It just it improves legibility, just like for people to be able to see it on the page. So under more text here, background color. So if I made that white, and actually, that doesn't really look how I would want it to. So maybe we don't do that. All right, I'm going to change that. But another option that you could do here, because this is such a vibrant background, is maybe make the text white and let's see how that works.
I tried a couple of different colors. I tried black. I tried, I don't know, maybe just the pictures is not a good one then.
It could be that, but maybe the answer here is to add a section right here, a header section. And put this there. Right? And then have that be what's here. And then maybe we can see hmm. Yeah, we'd have to play around with that a bit. That it might not be the best image to use. It could also be that maybe you use this image on the side in a section and then have the written section on the side. If you really, really, really love this image and want to use it. So that's that would be my suggestion there. I'm going to go ahead and delete my change there, though. All right. So going back here, that's definitely the first thing that stands out is you really want to make sure that people have an easy time understanding what's here. And then you've got your free guide. Great. I like this. This is something that you've changed since the last time we've talked where you've changed your copy here. And I think that this is a lot more effective. I am having a real hard time hearing you. I got some feedback there.
I am having a real hard time hearing you. Here's my other things. This Chromebook doesn't have much CPU usage. So I think it should be better now.
Okay, okay, cool, cool. That sounds better. Yeah. All right. Excellent. So one thing that I noticed on this section here is that it's not actually connecting to your blog. So let's check that out over here. All right. So this link.
Oh, wait, what happened?
Well, I don't I don't know.
All right, all right.
But okay, here we go. So this is actually not a working link on our site. So this hashtag blog, that hashtag in a field like this is going to work for contact, which will pop up your contact form and it will pop up a lead form if it's a custom page like this. So what we want to do is actually grab the link to your blog, which is a correct one that's up here. And then what we'll do is we'll put that right here in the URL field. And we don't have to open that new page. We'll go ahead and link the image with that as well.
Okay.
Excellent. And then the community, tell me about this. Is this a?
It's supposed to be linked into my Facebook group.
Okay, okay. Do you have that shared anywhere else inside your site or what basically?
It's in my footer.
Okay. Oh, it's in the footer.
Yeah.
So that would be this one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to copy that link here and we're going to just swap these out here as well. So now this will work. Yep, that's good. And then we'll get that one changed out as well. There we go. Perfect. And actually, since these go offsite, let's go ahead and make these open up in a new tab so that they don't lose website when they're navigating. Okay, excellent. So I like the changes that you've done here. Really, the only thing that I would change is is this image here. I think one of the things that I do when I'm having trouble with this in a background is I will take this image over to Canva. And I will take the, there's like a little filter kind of looking button. I'm not a graphic designer. Jess might be able to chime in more effectively on this. But but you know, for a layman, you know, in graphic design, ostensibly speaking to another layman in graphic design, we, there's, there's a thing there where you can actually change the transparency. And if you decrease the transparency, it's going to decrease the saturation because this is a white background by default. And it's going to automatically kind of lighten the photo. So a darker text like this will actually be more legible for you.
Okay.
Awesome. So that's saved. Let's go check it and make sure that these links are working for you. All right, that goes to the blog now. Excellent. Okay, so that's going there. And then let's double check for Facebook. Yep, there we go.
Okay.
All right, good job. I'm excited. Did you have any other questions while we're here?
Yeah, on the blog page, I noticed that there's a lot of space in between them. Like, is there any way to kind of make it look a little bit better orderly or to kind of bring it together?
Yeah. So what we can do is in your blog settings, you can actually choose how they show up. And Greg, you may be able to actually help with this because I'm not, let's see. Okay, so on your individual blog post, I believe you're going to show the excerpts of you're going to opt to show the excerpts of your of your blog posts. And that's going to give you something that's a little more cohesive, right? So if in every blog, you have a featured image like this and you have an excerpt that you've added, and this is done on the individual blog pages, then when the digest of your blog shows up, it's everything is going to be pretty similar where you've got an image and a little text and then read more image, little text, read more. That's going to give it more, more of a cohesive look. And they'll actually have to click off and go to that blog post to say, see your video, right? Or to, you know, see what the rest of this article looks like. So those, and Greg, please chime in if I'm like not getting this right at all because I don't really do a lot of the formatting on the blog side. But basically, what we do here is on the cinnamon family one, you would write a little bit of a blurb here. And then you go to advanced options, you would have an excerpt and you would click show excerpts. And then and then give it a featured image. And then that way, it's all going to be streamlined. And so if you do the the featured image and the excerpt and click to show it, then that's going to really clean up that blog homepage.
Okay.
Did I miss anything, Greg?
Nope, that sounds right. Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Excellent. Do you have any other questions while we're here?
No, I don't think so. I mean, does it? Does it look like, because I'm like I said, I narrowed it down from three different things to one. So does it look like something that is, I guess, appealing than my doing is my about me section too big? I kind of feel like I don't want to really focus on myself. You know, I want to be able to focus on what I'm actually doing. So I don't know.
So this is, this is actually really good because you've put a message here front and center so long as this becomes more legible. I think you're accomplishing the purpose of grabbing their attention and allowing them to see whether or not they should continue paying attention. And then, of course, if they landed here because maybe a friend posted something of yours, you know, maybe they're like, okay, well, how can you do that? How do you know what you're talking about? There's a little bit about here about you here too, which is good. This is perfectly good. This is not too long. I love it.
Okay, cool beans. And the colors are, that's my logo. I love my purple. So I've tried to get it in there. But I was trying to make it sure that it that it looks visually okay, like the colors are not too all over the place. And I'm kind of staying within the same, you know, kind of colors.
I think you've done a really good job. It's vibrant, but it is very much sort of like this purple and orange. And it's golden and and purple is really royal. Like, it's a really great color combo. And I mean, I see why you really like this image here. And maybe there's, there's other places to use it more effectively or just decrease the the filter on it. So or the, you know, I can't do these words.
The saturation.
The saturation there is. Yeah, so it's more legible. But yeah, no, I like, I like the color scheme you've got going here. And it's consistent, which is really good.
Okay, cool beans.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh huh. All right. So next Sheila. All right, Sheila Meyer, let's chat. Come on out.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Great. It's a frosty day here in Wisconsin.
Oh, yeah, it is here in upstate New York as well. We still have a lot of snow on the ground. Not used to this. So tell us about, tell us about what you would like to get some insight on on your site.
So I have recently made some changes to my branding and following some of your guidelines. Okay, I've lost visual. Hold on just a second. Oh, there it is. Okay. And so I worked back and forth with different things for my logo. My goal, my point is that people with autoimmune issues are resilient. And they need to learn that they're resilient, that they can be more than just that disease that they're harboring. And so I came up with the the logo at the top. It's, I think it's a Queen Anne's lace, which, you know, a weed is very resilient. It's very difficult to get rid of and that we can have energy and we can live a life despite these things. So I'm wanting to know what you think of the website, first of all, and if there is something else I should be doing to get better traction with it.
Okay, okay, this is wonderful. So I, I love the depth of meaning behind your logo. That's, it's not just a resilient plant. It's also medicine. That's wild carrot. So it's powerful medicine. So this is, this is wonderful. I love the message behind this. I it really, I feel like this conveys warmth and invites trust. And and I really like that a lot. I love the imagery of how you are really, you're really kind of coaching people toward believing in a higher version of themselves in spite of what they have to face or may have been facing for a long time on a day to day basis. So the the feedback that I would give specifically is potentially, just because it's not easy to see this language on this page until it's almost off the page, that we, that we consider maybe making this a parallax background for a message like this. So actually having this be the top section and then maybe having this right below it or maybe not having this parallax, meaning, let me see in your, oops, that's the wrong one, settings. Which one is this? This is home?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So yeah, so this is set to be parallax. Another option, I guess, perhaps what we could do here is add some space to this. Let's see if that makes a change, just because it's it's kind of, it's hard to see that very important message.
It is hard to see, right?
Yeah. So that, that's, that's a little bit tricky. So let me see what else can be done here. If we, one of the things you can do, if you have a tricky image, is you can change the padding on the top and bottom. So I'm doing that right now. And that should, that seems to have made a little bit of a change here. We could change that a little bit more and see if that makes a difference. All right, now let's, let's save and try that. I do really, I like that you've chosen this image. Yeah. So it's, this is, it's going to be tricky to use this. It might be, is this one that you've made?
Ah, yes.
Okay, so what I would recommend that you do is take this background image without this, this text message on it and consider making this white text sitting over this background. And and I would have this as like a button, like get my free guide. That's one thing that I am seeing on your page that that really could make the eye draw more quickly toward the action you want someone to take, which is to make things into buttons. And in customize my sites in your site settings here, I believe this is the right page. Forgive me if it's not. It is not. It is on the custom, custom fonts and colors page, right?
Right. I am familiar with them.
Excellent. So, oh, so you've made a couple of buttons. So what I would do here is if I could just show you and I can, I'll change the, we'll change it back. But just to give you an example, I'm going to duplicate this section here. And then, let's see, ditch the triggers and take back control of your life. So I would put that here and make that white and nice and very big, like a sixty or something. Maybe center it. And then beneath that, you would add a button, use your button and make sure it is centered. And then what is that? That's a get my free guy would be, yep, yep. Yep, yep. And this would be, I think this pops up a lead form for you. Right? I think that's true in your settings. Yep, there it is. Perfect. So that's, that's what I would recommend because that would, it would take, it would take advantage of the power behind this message without you having to worry about whether or not the text on the image will show up on different devices. That is sort of a tricky thing. People are inevitably going to be looking at your site from, you know, from a tablet or a phone or a computer with different resolution sizes for their browser. And so that's why it's, it's often really tricky to use text inside of images where you want to use it on your website. It's much better to place the text on your website where you want it to be on top of whatever image it is that you want to use. But this is what I would recommend for your top section is is something more like this on top of this image without the the text on the image.
Okay, and then keep it as the, what'd you call it? The floating, the floating.
Oh, the parallax?
Parallax, yeah.
I think, I think that could work. Let's take a quick look and see. Oh, yes, that is still parallax background. So I'm going to save this and we can, we can delete it when you like.
I did actually create two different images, one for use for the, like a mobile phone and one for a laptop.
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah, you could definitely do this here with the parallax. Yeah, that that works. And so having this be the thing that's up at the very, very top of your page, I think is going to be really impactful because the image says a lot without having to have a label on it. And then it's clearly got, here's what I can do for you. And I've got a guide, right?
So is there another place than that I can put freedom despite autoimmunity? Or is that just not fit on here at all anywhere?
Put it right up top. Make a little, make a little thing here, thin header. Oops, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes you gotta do this weird thing. Apple is like this too. Okay, so freedom. What is a freedom in spite despite? Yep. So you can just, you know, make a, make a header section that says that. And then you've got the message right here. You could definitely include both of those things.
Nice. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Let's see, freedom despite an autoimmune disorder, three tips to get back on the road to wellness. Okay, excellent. I would, I would potentially, knowing that that strangers could find you here and maybe don't know much about you or like whether or not you're talking about their specific autoimmune condition or their, well, I unspecific as the case may be, autoimmune condition, maybe, maybe adding just a little bit in the way of bullet points, you know? So if you're feeling this, that, or the other, or if you've been diagnosed with this, that, or the other, or something like that, just to kind of call out and let them know that it's them specifically that you're talking to. So people who are maybe experiencing a certain set of problems or frustrations or that have names attached to them, potentially to to the extent that you stay compliant, of course.
Right, right.
I like it. It's good. In any of these cases, like join us, I think that this being a button would be more effective than just text. And that link does appear to work. Excellent. And I love my freedom journey as a name. That's, that's excellent. It's very group building, you know, community building name. This is also, you've got really great images here. This is good too. And then this as well, making this a button, just so people know, because people, when they see text, they don't necessarily know that they can click on it or should. And you'll actually get a higher likelihood of people taking advantage of text that should be clickable if you make it a button. So if you just say, click here, people will know that they can click there, but their eye is drawn to it immediately if it's a button. We want to press buttons, like since we're little kids, we want to press buttons. And we don't stop wanting to press buttons when we grow up and do things on the internet. So this is, this is good. I like, I like your footer down here. This is nice. And I love, I love this sort of bright teal color that you've incorporated into your logo and your text. It's really good. Your blog link does not appear to be working up here, though. Or wait, is it? It's just not the whole thing, maybe? Read my, my is hyperlinked there, but the rest of it, do you see how my, what my cursor is doing here?
Yeah.
Read my blog. So that's, so my story appears to be my is hyperlinked in story, but not story. So I would, I would definitely take a look at that and make sure that home is hyperlink to go back to this, this page as well. So that would be, so my here. Oh, here we go. Yeah, right. See, if you look at text, read my blog. All right. And then we just delete the other stuff. Right? So there we go. I'm, would you like for me to delete this section that I made as an example here for you?
Sure.
Okay. Because it is published currently. Excellent. Well, do you have any other questions?
Um, yes. And I'm not sure if it relates directly to the website, but I have, eventually, I want to be able to put some other options out here for educational tools and classes. And I have like three different PowerPoint slideshows that I have on different subjects. And I currently have them in a vault, but they're not, you know, lengthy necessarily. And I'm not sure if a vault, like as an online class, so to speak, and I'm not sure if that is the best venue for them, if that's the best platform for them, or, you know, is there a different, a better option for something like?
Can you tell me the, the topic or title of one of those?
Yes. Stress and digestion is one. I actually have them all in one vault at the moment, and I don't that's what it's called. I think it's called. Let me get into it here. Loss of life, going to that one, loss of life.
Okay. Stress and digestion?
Yep. So any one of those is is good to go with.
Oh, okay. So this, you have it on YouTube already. All right. So this is actually really great lead generating content. I would, I would actually say that putting that here saying, you know, ditch the triggers, take back control of your life, watch my free, what is it? Hold on, go back. Watch my free, how long is this video? Watch my 24 minute video on how you can X, Y, Z, whatever this video teaches them how to do. And then they opt in, you send them to a separate custom page that where they can play that video and then maybe book a call with you beneath it. So that's actually, that's content that would be great for leads. I wouldn't hide that away in a vault. I would, I would display that prominently to as many people as possible. That is content that gives you credibility. That kind of thing is a great thing to talk about. Maybe you have a blog post that doesn't go into quite as great detail as that video does. But then you can say, if you want to watch a full video that I created on stress and digestion, click here. And then you basically make this video, the the lead magnet for a funnel. And what that would entail is just creating a custom page, embedding this link on that custom page and having that be on the other side of a landing page or on the other side of the lead form on your homepage. Does that make sense? So instead of getting a guide here, they would actually get a video, maybe they give it a guide too. But like, I think that it's a compelling topic, right? Like stress and digestion, learn how you can what? And then you put that here. And I think that that's actually going to be potentially more effective than just, you know, I have a guide and there are three tips on it. It's, I have a video that teaches you about this thing that you know you have to deal with, but you don't know how to deal with effectively on your own. That's really valuable content.
Okay, so.
I would say that's the case for either of these things. If you've got a presentation, this is kind of like, I mean, you're a speaker, right? You should be promoting yourself as such. And and here is a talk that I gave on stress and digestion, right? And so you can get leads by saying, you know, here, enter your name and email. I'm going to take you straight to this talk that I gave. It's going to help you because you're here because you're struggling with an autoimmune disorder.
Okay, all right, great.
Yeah, that's awesome that you have that. Definitely use it to the maximum capacity available.
Well, I'm hoping to. I wasn't sure which direction to go with all three of these. The other ones are, you know, I was thinking in terms of can any of them be like a, a way to, for another income stream type of thing? Are they good enough for a paid type of thing, you know, learning? For one of them is learning, learning how to be leadership from watching the Eagles.
That's wow. That's great. So I mean, there's, there's always potential in content to make it something that's paid. I think that if that is a specific desire that you have, then you need to, you know, really be intentional in saying, okay, I am, I'm going to start a new lane, a new income stream in my business. And the way that I'm going to produce income is this. Here's what it's going to be. And then here are the things I'm going to do to promote it. There are ways that you can overlap. So for instance, I think if you are talking about leadership and you're talking about, and you're talking about freedom from autoimmune issues. Um, and you're talking about freedom from autoimmune issues. Uh, then, you know, there's enough overlap there for either of those lanes to eventually introduce young living to the audience that's attracted. Because of those underlying messages that's coming out in your content, leadership, autoimmune, right? So, um, you know, if you want to turn something that is content or something that you know into an income stream. Really, the thing that you want to do first is to decide what the thing is that you're going to sell. Or if you're going to use that avenue of content to just produce better leads for you for young living. Both of these are really great. I recommend doing the latter first, uh, because it's going to get you into more of the habits. And, uh, skill sets and production quality that really affords, you know, being paid for the content that you create. Helps you to become known because you build a bigger following anyway, and you've already got a lead, an income stream to tap people into, right? Whether they're interested in leadership, um, you know, I mean, that is what network marketing is. It is, it is leadership with a compensation plan and great product attached. And, uh, and then of course with autoimmune, of course, they would need, you know, what you can offer them with young living.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. So custom, this would be the, the way to advertise really any of those things, right?
So, uh, the custom page is where you want to put that video, the, the recording that you made. Uh, and then, um, and then on your landing page or a lead form like this one, that is where you say. Hey, I made a video that's going to help you with this issue, get this benefit, and then you're going to redirect them. So when you, um, going back over here to your homepage. What you would do. Is in your settings, after someone enters their information on lead capture. You would send them to the page that has the, um, the video embedded in it. Or to a thank you page, and then in the campaign, you send them the link to the page with the, um, with the video.
Right, okay, great.
Thank you so much for coming out today, Sheila.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. All right, all right. Um, Angie George is next, if you could raise your hand, please. There you are. How's it going? Hi.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Good.
Good, glad to have you here today. I'm working on bringing up your website here for a second.
This is my first call, so it's good. I'm excited.
Excellent. Is this your first weekly work session or your first time on a call?
I'm embarrassed to say altogether, first time. Yeah, like I usually work days at the gym, so this is perfect. I'm so.
Okay.
Although I've been in constant contact or email with you guys in the, the last week, so thank you.
Well, we're glad to help. So tell us a little bit about what kind of feedback you're looking for here on your site.
Okay, well, what I've been, I'm probably doing things a little bit backwards. Um, only because I'm in a time crunch. So I'm in Martha's, uh, HBR, I'm doing some courses, been in since January, really just started the last couple of weeks. And the reason for that is the twenty-eighth elevate got me motivated to try to move forward with this. Um, the reason is I'm a gym owner and when they said that we could incorporate that. Charge a fee, do personal coaching, all of that, it just sort of made sense. Um, I was doing the go for gold, so I did like, let's see, well, you helped me create my story. So I got it started, but it was the young living, you know, look and all of that. So the last couple of days, I have switched it over to this. Um, I don't know that it's perfect, but it's, it's good to, I guess, move forward. Um, my quest, I have a couple of questions, like, okay, the. I was doing, let's see, what was my free thing? It was like, you would, I deleted it because it wasn't done. It was like.
Okay.
Five ways to stop starting over or something like that. Um, it should be in there somewhere, but, so I took that out because I just wasn't sure. Like how to create a landing page or a lead page or a lead magnet, I, I don't know. I just, and I'm sure I'm just overskipping the, um, the videos and all that. Because I'm really focused on this twenty-eight to elevate right now.
Okay.
Um. So I, I don't know. So just, I'll take any advice you have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Forward and.
So this is, this is what you're going to want to do. Um, first and foremost. Um, what I would recommend that you do on your homepage is to allow your logo to live up here in the left-hand side where it already is. And then allow this top space here, this is, if you, uh, you remember, I don't know, people still pick up and buy local papers from the store. That above the fold part of the paper, that's the reason why, like that's the, the conversion rate for newspapers has to do with what's above the fold. So the conversion rate on, which basically means will people take action, will you get leads? From your website is really dependent upon what's above the fold here. And so what we want to do is, is start, is make this section all about them and something that they want. So, um, so let this be what it is. I would remove your logo from right here. This can live up here at the top, that's fine if you want, or you can just put it up here in the menu and you don't have to have them here. You can have this up here and not have, and not do that. Um, but what you really want right here is, I help this type of person get this result, here's how you get it. And then, and then there's the button, right? And so what you're really focusing on right now is leveraging twenty-eight to elevate from grow. Then what you do here is, okay, what are the benefits to twenty-eight to elevate? They are, um, what is it? It's a twenty-eight days to this, that, and the other thing. So you say, I help, you know, who is your, who's your person, your bat signal person, is it, you know, it's. I help women who are tired of feeling this way.
Right.
Feel vibrant again, join my free twenty-eight day program. Here's the button. So that's what I would put right here, and then you just take it over here and just let it redirect to this page.
Okay, I can do that.
Right? And then what I would put up here is say, um, what I would put here. Because we're already talking about stopping, starting over and taking control here, I would just make it really clear, pick one of the options below to get started. So it's super clear to them.
Right.
Yep, just let them know because they're, they're, they're going to get lost, you know? Yep, so I would just say, pick, you know, you want to get started right now, click, click the button below. Uh, if you want to join an upcoming live one, get on the list for it, and that's it.
Okay, perfect. Because like when you scroll down.
Need to lead to getting someone.
Love that, because I know when I even looked, looked at it like on a phone, it just felt so busy. And even on a computer, and I was just, I didn't know what to do, so that's perfect. So like when you scroll down, um, because I do have a few friends testing this. So when you go to the options, I know one of you emailed, okay, right there with the graphics. My start now and save a seat, those links work, but when you click on the graphics, start now and save my seat, unless it's been updated. Those were linking to Chrissy.
Oh, interesting.
How to take that out.
Let's, okay, well, let's, let's look at that. So in your custom pages.
And I think some other people that's trying to do this, we were trying to figure it out together, and I'm like, that is over my, I can't figure that one out.
We actually, we've been hearing about this as well, and Greg, I don't know, I don't know if your ears are ringing right now. But this linked image may have been one of the things that we were looking for this past week. Yeah, all right, so for those of you who have this.
Yeah, one of my friends messaged me last night and I'm like. Yeah, and I can't figure it out, and she's, I'm like, just click on everything, and she messaged me late last night, she said, oh my God, it's the graphics. But I'm like, but I don't know how to fix that, so.
I want to hug your friend. Okay, so here's what we do. Grab your link here, this is your correct link. And, and then click this image, and let's edit this link. And we are going to update in our, in our templates in the sharing bundle for grow. We're going to make sure that this is not, it's not going to be linked anymore.
We're going to make a lot of people happy. Rocking my brain and she messaged me late last night.
Collins, Collins over here going, oh my God, it was the graphic.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, who knew, right? A lady from Minnesota found that one out.
Well, thank your friend from Minnesota. All right, so this is fixed, this is fixed.
Okay, now. Um, the my story part, like, okay, down at the bottom, meet Angie George, charge her starting over. Like, is that sort of attached at the bottom of every, I think I just, if you could point me to some videos. That way I don't take so much time, you know, on, I don't know how things flow, like I need a flow chart, you know? Does that make sense? Like this is this.
There are, there are, they tend to be tied to strategy. So if you.
Okay.
Use, so here, here you go. When you go to your story and photo, you get to choose where that shows up on your site, right? So you can chose whether, choose whether it shows up on your blog archive page, on blog posts and events, and on landing pages. If you don't want it on your landing pages, you can uncheck that right there.
Okay, because I'm fine with that, I just, because I'm getting ready to start on the blog and just everything else. So I think, um, your suggestion, removing the name and all that, that's a great suggestion. I never thought about that. And it just, I'm like, in your face, you know, when they look it up, because when it's on a phone, it has my name twice. And I was like, hmm, I don't know what to do about that, so.
Yeah, so it's going to show up here because you've uploaded your logo to the site. Uh, so I would just remove this right here and just try to make the first thing they see on the page that's not your name in the menu about them. And that's going to make them pay attention.
Perfect, okay. Oh, and then one other question about, um. I finally was approved by, uh, Stripe. So I had to remove all the CBD and all the links for Young Living. I mean, they were just.
I'm so sorry.
It's, well, it's fine, it's, it's, I did.
It's frustrating.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I know, they were complaining because of the beauty boost. I'm like, okay. But anyway, um, if I want to add that to the elevate, you all sent me an email for that. Um, so I can go back and, and do that. Um, if Stripe has accepted me, basically I just follow the email that you sent me, and it's done? Like, then people will pay for the course?
So in terms of this Grow Workspace course, you're going to want to check with them. Because I'm not sure what the permissions are around selling, like reselling.
Well, um, what they said, because I asked that over and over and over, this is the one that we can do. If we also offer personalized coaching.
Okay, okay.
Like workouts and things like that, so.
Well, so, yes. In terms of making sure Stripe works, you're probably going to want to just get on, you know, check with support on that, just shoot them an email. Uh, because that's not really something that I could speak to right now. Uh, but if, if they said it's okay and it's set up on our site, then everything should be fine there.
Okay, well, they sent me an email, so I should be able to figure that out. But yeah, this is the only course, I think, with Grow Workspace, where they said if we, uh, do personalized coaching. And so that's why I thought it would be a good implementation, since I own a gym. To do that also with some, because with COVID going on, you know, there's a lot of people that doesn't want to come to the gym right now. So I could do online, so anyway, just, I, it, that's what got me motivated to try to get this done. So anyway, all right, um, well, unless there's something else, I mean, there's a lot not included yet, but I will get there.
You will, you will. I'm proud of you. You're doing great work and thanks for joining. Hope you come back again.
I will. Thank you, Ashley.
Of course. All right, take care. All right, we now have Carolyn Prince, come out, raise your hand for me, please. There you are. Hi.
There we go. Now can you hear me?
I sure can. How are you?
Good, good.
Good, good.
Just called this quickly this morning, and I'm usually busy on Thursdays, and I, I live on the west coast in Canada, so I saw it at like eight o'clock here. And it was coming up in an hour, and I thought, oh, I'll just try.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad that was able to work out for you. Tell me what kind of feedback you're looking for.
Okay, I'm, I've got quite a bit on my website already, but like, um. So I have two different things on it. I do, I'm an Ula Life Coach, and I do Young Living. So my first page, and that was part of my question, is, is there too much on the first page? So the idea was this get a little, little bit on the first page that could go to the different pages then. So about coaching, then it can go to the coaching page, and then down a little bit, it could go to the healthy living page, which was Young Living. And so I didn't know, like, is that, if I got too much, like, I looked at it and I thought, I have too many words on the main page.
So it's, there's not an exact science to this, but I will say this. The homepage of your site should serve first and foremost as a way for you to establish in plain, specific, clear. Concise terms, this is who I'm here for and what I do for them. And then maybe a little bit, just a little bit of who I am, and then of course avenues for them to go off and pursue further information about who you are. And then really what we're trying to do is just funnel them toward taking a one primary main step, which is to get on your email list. We want to capture people who land here and get them on your email list so that they will come back. Because you will email them and they'll come back for things that you tell them to come see. So for that reason, we should not necessarily create a directory of all of the things that we do on the homepage of our site. You can, I'm not saying don't, and if you've done this, it doesn't mean that you've done something wrong. It's just going to be more effective for you in the long term. If you think about it, right, like you putting, like if you just went and put on your Facebook page, I'm an Ula Life Coach, here's a link. I'm a Young Living distributor, here's a link. That's not necessarily like a, a representation of an effective strategy to get Ula Life Coaching clients. Or to get Young Living members, right?
Yeah.
What, uh, the conversion event that causes, uh, you to grow in Young Living or with Ula is a conversation. And so what we're trying to do overall in a strategy is to speak straight into the right person. And then give them a compelling reason to take an action right now so that you can move them toward that conversion event, which is a phone call. Inevitably, or a one-on-one conversation, however you prefer to, to hold it. So with that in mind, you want everything on your website not to be, you know, saying, here is your buffet of information. But saying, here's what I can do for you, here's a taste of the pie, come over here if you want to get the, you know, like a whole piece. And, uh, that's, that's sort of the psychology here. So what I would do is, um, let's see. This right here is fine for this page. But getting into, getting into coaching and lifestyle, maybe you put those on separate pages, right? And it looks like you have already done that, which is good. So you give, give them places to dig further, but you want to, at any turn. Uh, give them as few options as possible on a single page. Because, you know, if you give people more than one option, uh, they, the, the likelihood that they take no option and do nothing increases. Uh, greatly, because it's easy to become overwhelmed with information, especially when you consider how distracted people are. So, uh, distraction by default, uh, means that people are about paying, paying about fifty percent attention, uh, to what they're taking in. And if there are too many options, uh, it's just, it's just too much. So, um, yeah, so I, I, I love what you've done visually with your branding, first and foremost. It's beautiful and you've done an excellent job with it. Um, it's very clean, it's, it's really easy, uh, to, to actually navigate visually. Um, really, the only thing that I would do is to remove these from the front page. Uh, and then try to find a way with a, maybe putting this button, like, change this message up a little bit and say, I help women find. Find balance and live life vibrantly, learn how you can X, Y, Z, get this thing, right? And then that's where your lead magnet is, that lives right here, put the button right here in the center, give them a reason to, to click it. And, um, and allow this section of your page to serve its most effective purpose.
So how do you do that then, when you have like two businesses? So how, do I put one on for coaching? Because like I heard you talk to the previous lady, I have a video, which I have in a vault right now. So do you put it on there and get a lead magnet? And then I've got a lead magnet on the, um, or landing page, I forget which is which all the time. In, in the healthy living, healthy lifestyle, which there's one in there. So, um, it'll come up. Uh, where is it?
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
There's that one, and then I, like, my, my coaching is my, probably my foremost part right now that I like to do. That's why the Young Living page hasn't got much on it, whereas the coaching part has more, there's event, there's an event that I've got coming up and so on. So like on the homepage, would I put this? That's why I had them kind of, my thought was to direct them to either page. So I could get them for like the coaching or the Young Living, but I wasn't sure how to do that on the homepage.
Got you, got you. Yeah, so, um, so what I would say is, on, on your homepage. Consider creating something that isn't so obviously logically tied to oils or coaching. Think about what's important to the woman that you serve, right? Because it's not just that you help women find balance and live vibrantly. This is, um, you know, think about sort of your bat signal woman. I mean, she's, she's got specific values, specific struggles. Uh, maybe specific hobbies, interests, passions. Uh, you're helping a very specific person get a very specific result. And the truth is, how you, how Carolyn helps that woman is neither Ula nor oily exclusively. It's probably a combination of the two. So maybe just start thinking about this from your brand, you Carolyn, being the unifying umbrella. What does Karen, Carolyn uniquely know, uh, how to do? That she can help another woman transform, uh, a, a part of her life today with that thing. Offer that here, right? And then what you're going to do is, you know, when you get on calls or, you know, you get into conversation. Offer that here, right? And then what you're going to do is, you know, when you get on calls or, you know, you get into conversations, you're able to ascertain whether or not they're ready for uh, you know, an Ula course or program right now or, you know, whether it might just be a good idea to get them started, you know, with one oil or whatever it is, right? Um, the end of the day, it's, we don't wanna be thinking about funneling people with the website into Ula or oils. We wanna be thinking about funneling people into your network who like you, what you have to say and what you know, uh, so that those people might come to trust you to take your recommendation on any number of recommendations you can give them, which is, you know, Ula oils or a combination or even other things potentially. So um, so having having a page up, if you're an Ula coach, having a page up about Ula on your website is truly only going to be really effective for you to send someone to after you've had a conversation with them one-on-one about Ula. Right? It's a secondary, well, can I see some of this on paper? And similar with with Young Living, I mean, you don't just send someone to your site and expect them to find everything that they need to find. And we should never expect, no matter how good we are at designing our website, that it's just gonna do all the heavy lifting for us where that's concerned. We still have to be an active participant in leading them toward the conclusion that they have or making a tool that makes our involvement more effective or more leveraged, but it doesn't replace us. So I would simply just look at this as Carolyn knows something that is unique and special to this ideal person. And uh, what is that? And make that like make a video for her and have it only available on the other side of the lead form on this page.
Okay, yeah, yeah, cuz I have a I have a video already.
Perfect.
Uh, that that really helps. I have another question. It's more of a techie one. So I have an event coming up, which I made a a custom page for. And I also made an event which leads to the custom page. And so I've got it in a number of Facebook groups, which are where I'm finding people cuz that's where my people are. And so I s- I just made the event in case somebody happened to be on there. But the custom page is the half-day webinar there.
Okay.
Um, so if I've I made the event also because it's nice and easy to have people in there when I want to go and just email to that as opposed to a tag, I just find it really easy. How do I enter people into, like, when when people have paid for this and they they've seen it and they've signed up for it? How do I personally enter people into the event? So I have them all there in one place as opposed to just a tag?
Where are you hosting the event?
It's online.
Right, but where like, is it, is it a Zoom call? Is it on? And and where are you collecting these people? So let let me see, on this page.
So in this in this page, there's the um. It comes up.
Okay.
So I was taking payments on here and it comes up when you scroll down that there the lead magnet will come up where I get their information and it takes them to the payment page. But I also made the event like in the event section, which leads to this page so they can sign up.
Uh huh, okay.
Go to the event, but I just, for me personally, it's an easy way to keep track of people.
I see, I see. Okay, so this um, I see what you mean. Um, so you do have, and and we don't have a Stripe integration onto our events. Uh, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong there. I know you can add like a PayPal button, for instance, if you wanna do that. Um, but really, all you have to do, if someone is opting in and buying on this page, all you have to do to find them is search for these tags in your contact manager. And from there, you um, and there you email them or whatever it is that you wanna do. I mean, if the the goal is for this, this is just gonna be a webinar. Um, if you're not going to be creating any other kind of structure like a vault or a Facebook group or something like that, uh, then that's really all you have to do to manage is to just go to your contacts, go to manage and search for that vault.
Okay, okay. Um, I had another question. If I have a so I have a vault made up and I had a video in there, which I have on the on the coaching page, they can go there. From the coaching page, um. Wha- what was my question? Can I have part of the vault? Like, I just made like a a page on there and yeah, so they can go to here, watch the video. But then I was wondering, it can I put a class in there, which would be like workshop that would be a paid one? Or once they're in the vault, are they in the vault no matter what's in there?
Right, so that's you just answered your question there. So once they're in the vault, they're in the vault. Uh, if you wanted to have a vault that is paid, then you would want to create a payment option for them to get into the vault. Uh, and then um, yeah, that's and that that's basically how that would work. So they would have to pay to access the vault. And then, of course, once they're in there, they get access to whatever it is that you've offered. If you want to offer something that is sort of gated inside of a vault, you still need to have payment happen before they enter. But you could set up a class, an online class in your vault, to where instructor approval is required for them to move forward to subsequent lessons, for instance. If you wanted to, you know, sort of gate an experience and maybe not allow for um, you know, movement through beyond a certain point. Like, we have, I have a client right now who has like a four-part payment um, that she's handling separately cuz she's in a she's in a country that I guess doesn't really utilize Stripe much. And so what she's doing is um, she's gating uh in one of her vaults, content inside of a paid program uh that to stop at the end of a certain module. And then she has to go, she's going and verifying that that person has paid to the next round so that she can let them move ahead uh through the next uh through the next round of things. That's um, that's not fully automated, of course, but like, that's a way that you could do something like that. But either way, you gotta pay before you get in.
Okay. So that would be the same then, obviously, for classes. If you had two, if you put two classes in a vault?
Hmm, yeah, it's um, e- everything in the vault is going to be more or less available or visible to anyone who gets access to the vault. So you would want to to put the paywall up at the fault level. Um, and then, you know, if you want different things accessible at different points, you may wanna consider using different vaults.
Okay. So if I had two classes in one vault that not paid, but just one was like for Young Living where it was like prospects and one was the other for members? The member one, I could have it where it was kind of the, they have to get approval to get in or?
Well, so so you would wanna put those in separate vaults. You would have a lead vault and you would have a member vault.
Okay. All right.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great questions. Yeah, great questions and beautiful work. You're doing a great job with this, Carolyn.
Yeah, I had some other techie questions, but I'll ask, I'll send it to the support.
Awesome. Yeah, I I'm definitely not the tech guru here. So thank you for coming out and uh, we look forward to seeing more of your great work. Thanks, Carolyn. All right, last but not least, Shannon, are you still here with us? Thank you for being patient. There you are. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Glad to have you here. Tell us about what you are looking to get out of your feedback here today.
Well, I did the um, the Alice Allison Marshall. Yeah, she, I did her, like, how to make your custom page. So this is actually this, I made a custom page. And then the one that I've gotten now, I didn't like. It took so long and it looked okay, but it was like, I'm a health coach. It was like specific for health coaching. And I felt like it was too, like, I didn't really know where I was going with it. So then I created this more just out of a template that was already there. And so I don't know if I should maybe somehow link that health coaching page somehow on here? Like in a, like a menu?
Okay, so let's see. I'm just kind of going through the links that you have here. I'll say first and foremost, okay, so these are some of our built-in links for Get Oiling.
Yeah.
Um, okay, first of all, uh, hats off to, was it Greg on our team who made this beautiful like theme? Uh, you've done wonderful work with it. I really do too. Like, I saw it. I was like, that's that's one of our templates, but it it looks really good. You've done a great job with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
And I just started, um, I've made jewelry for a while and so I'm doing Martha's Homebase Revolution. And so I wanted to make another income stream. So that is my jewelry. So it goes to my Shopify site. Yeah, and so.
Okay. So the the first thing that I would recommend uh as as I'm on the blog right here, uh, as I mentioned earlier on um, to a close, say, is uh to go to the individual blog settings. Make sure that you have a featured image for each one. And you have a um, what do you call it? Sort of like the the little blurb uh enabled there. So that's gonna make everything more or less show up like this, for instance.
Okay.
Um, so that you have your main blog page uh is a little more visually cohesive. Um, yeah, so that's that's one thing. Um, but for to to the end of um, to the end of of coaching, uh, let's see, get your free guide. Where does this go?
So and it goes to like this.
Oh, okay. So this is actually the the built-in. Okay, so so this.
But I don't know how to get this to ask them for their info. Because I removed, like, when um, they go to navigate off of the page, I have like my the block or the box pops up and asks for their info and it will give them um, like a campaign that is for um, like my tips, my oily tips. Like, it's like a, like every day they get an email and it's for de-stressing. And it is like one of the Modern Makery um campaigns, Modern Makery, is that who I'm?
Okay.
Modern Companion.
Modern Companion, okay. I was gonna say, I wasn't familiar. Excellent. No, we we love her. Alright, so so this is Y Essential Oils. So this is the uh, we're just gonna gonna call this a homepage lead. So this is my site settings right here. Uh, when you're on your page, you go to site settings and lead capture settings. So you already have this here, right? So you know the campaign that's going to be used. Now, the only problem is that right here, you're sending them straight off to the PDF. That's not what we want. We wanna put hashtag lead in here.
Okay.
And then hit update. And then under settings, we're going to redirect to this. So that means they have to put in their name and email.
Okay. I couldn't remember how to do that. And I was like, I'm sure that I had it before, but I can't remember.
Uh huh. Well, you it was working as a pop-up. So it was happening as a pop-up on the page, right? So visitor tries to move away from the page, uh, which is an exit intent pop-up. You also have the ability to make it show up if they've been on the page for a while as well. You could certainly do that too, up to you. But if I save that and we go back over here, now we'll see when we click this, we have to put in our information, right? Alright, so so for health coaching, um, okay, we've got contact there. So what I would say is, these are all uh blog updates, right?
Hmm.
These are great. I would make images like this for all of your blog posts and have those be the featured images so that they all have that pretty cohesive look on your blog page. Since you, you know, you're you're doing that. Oh, I love how this did that thing. Do you guys see that? Watch this, watch this, watch this. Oh, I was just the first time. They slide in. It's so cool. Alright, so support for parents and kids isn't currently going anywhere? Right? It's going up to the top and that one's going up to the top.
Oh, you have to click on the words.
Oh, okay. So let's let's make sure that these, oh, it's a sway. It's taking them off to a sway. Alright, so let's make sure, I don't know what's going on with that. There we go. Um, we're gonna make this link. So if you've got images that are linked, just make sure that they're linked to the same as the uh, as it's attached to it. So let's, oops, make sure there's no hashtag in front of that. Okay, so what this will look like now, we come over here, is when we click on this, it's gonna take us off to this sway, which is great. Oh, that's so cute. You totally, did you update this? This is is.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, I've seen this gross way and and this, this is so different and I love it. It's adorable.
Yeah, I made it like kid-friendly, like cute for parents.
Yeah, yeah. So you have an opportunity here too, just, you know, FYI. And let me check this real quick. So that goes to your Facebook. Um, love it, love it. My uh productivity software does not love it that it's Facebook. Alright, so um, what I would do here is maybe say a little bit more about this. And why not use this as an opportunity to grab a lead, right? So this can be a landing page. We actually have, if you go and you look up sway on our Get Oiling uh YouTube channel, there is a sway funnel class that is linked there somewhere in there, uh, where I actually teach you how to take a Grow Workspace sway, make a landing page about it, and then actually embed the sway on a custom page so that now instead of just sending it off to a sway where what the heck's gonna happen when they go there, they go to the sway that's on your page on your Get Oiling site. And then maybe there's a button below it that says, do you wanna learn more and talk about what the best options are for your kids or whatever? Then they can click to contact you. And now they've got a real specific reason. And you know when they contact you that they saw that sway cuz they're tagged in your system.
Okay, cuz all I, in the sway, I edited, like, I linked through, like, where it talks about different packages, like, I linked to my um, like, they click their their link, so it will take them places.
Hmm.
But that.
Check this out. Alright, so we're just gonna add a section here. Go to code view. What I did here was I went to um, okay, here here we go. This says filler text replaced with your own. I'm gonna pop this this in right here. All I did was I went to your sway and I grabbed the, went to share and then grabbed the embed code. So now that's here and I'm gonna hit, oh, this is, what is this, oils? For kids with special needs. Okay, this is gonna be by link only cuz it's gonna be on the other side of the landing page. Alright. There we go. That's embedded now. You can give it a background and then beneath it, want more insight into what the best options are for your kids. Get in. And then we'll add a button. You can make yourself some of your own custom buttons or use some of these. And we're gonna just say, contact me. Oops. Okay, so this is now, if you view it, instead of them going off to some wherever, they can actually go through it on your page. And then all you would need to do now is just grab the link to this page and then make a landing page or offer it on the homepage of your site or whatever. You could just create a landing page here. And and then you've got a funnel for your sway. Alright, so this is um, we're gonna just call this oils for special needs. And you'd need to change that around a bit. Watch our um, watch our YouTube video on this. Uh, they're gonna be redirected to this page. That's done. Once we're done, uh, you'll want to tag them, special needs, lead, right? And yeah, so anyway, this is uh, what is oils for special? Cool. How many of you guys hatch mind-blown sway funnel? I know, it's really, the stuff isn't very hard. Um, and it's so long as our our way of thinking about what we're doing is one that is logical and tied to what we would be doing normally. We're just allowing the robots to do a little bit of the work for us. That's all.
Like, I've gotten better at it. The it's not as scary as it was. I've had other websites and so they're in, they're all frickin' different. Every single one is so different. So like, learn, it's like learning a new language, but.
It's true.
Like, I'm it's, I'm getting better at it and it's not as scary. And it really, once you stop thinking it's scary, it's easier.
It's so true. It's so true. Those are such powerful insights. Oh, this is one of your your themes. Excellent. Yeah, look, uh, the the thing is, right? Like, what what you're just talking about there, learning all these different languages. The cool thing is, is that in with just about any other option that's out there, to do the things that you're able to do with this site, you have to learn how to use seven different systems. Uh, and and you you don't have to anymore cuz it's all here. If you wanna add a couple of things on and be extra, that's fine. I mean, I recommend that you use Vimeo or maybe Calendly or whatever, but I mean, you really don't need much else when you've got all this. So you're doing great. Um, I would um, I would encourage you to come up with your own thing here, you know, how do you like? Why does that mom wanna detox? What's her unique circumstance? What is the compelling thing that you know that maybe she doesn't? And it's probably very obvious and right in front of you, but you think it needs to be something bigger or more special. It's not.
Um, like, it's like I, I'm like the toxin-free mama and I focus on like removing toxins and liking your foods and like your body care products and stuff like that and synthetics. And like, there's a whole part of like my, kind of like my health, like my, like, why I'm the way I am that I am, I wanna share it, but it's controversial. Like, I was vaccine injured. So that is like something that's like, either people will like gravitate towards. So that is like something that's like, either people will like gravitate towards that and they will be like, oh, I want to learn more. Or people will be like, eh, click delete. I don't want to like, so like that's something that's, that I would love to share more about. And I'm not, like, I don't know how to like share me and my truth without it turning people off.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And, and you, you want to know something? That's actually, that's a really good thing. That's a really, really good thing. Um, that second category of people who are like, eh, be grateful that they're like that so that they can go on their merry, merry way and not cause you any friction or irritation in your life. You don't need them. They don't need you. There's enough people in the world. It's okay. You don't have to be everything for everyone. You have to be the champion for your people. And there are enough people for you to champion, for you to have the abundance that you are here to create and to help others do the same. Uh, there's enough. So don't worry for a second about people who would be turned off by your truth. They were never meant for you and that's really, really okay. And the thing is, and here's the beautiful thing, right? Not every person who will eventually be a part of your Young Living team, your organization, uh, are, are going to be people who perfectly align with you. But you know what? You're going to recruit people who they align with and, and they can go get them, right? And that's the whole point. You attract your people, you empower, enable and enable your people. And you help them to do the same. If we duplicate leadership, like that's basically what we're talking about here. Live your truth, lead your truth, teach others to do the same. You can lift all the boats and you still don't have to be everything for everyone. You can have people on your downline who really don't like you and that's really okay. Cause they can do their own thing with their upline or not, right? Um, you know, or on their own. It's a beautiful thing about this business. So, um, so if, if it's important to you to talk about something, then talk about it. If it's controversial, honestly, it's probably better for you, right? Right? I mean, Royal Crown Diamond Jody Messchuck. She speaks her truth. Right? Like you guys, check her out. She's speaking the truth. And is she everything for everyone? Nope. Does she care? Nope.
Yeah, I follow Heather Brock. I heard her at convention and
Oh, yeah.
As soon as her first like, like one minute, I was like, you're my person. I identify with you and like, I love her. And it's, I mean, and it's true, like you can't be everything for everybody. Cause if you're for everybody, you're for nobody. It's just scary sometimes, I guess.
That's okay. You know what? If, if we don't go through the fire, how can we lead others, right? We have to do that. We have a responsibility for that.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I hope that you will begin sharing proudly and boldly. Uh, we have your back, right? Show of hands. We have her back. Yes. Awesome. Thank you. All right. We have a couple of questions left. Thank you guys for sticking around long. I have not seen the chat. Just been talking up to everybody who's been on here this whole time. Um, okay. So there's basically three that I assume maybe you guys left for me. Um, Angela says, the branded topics from the last two weeks were confusing to me. Specifically how to get signature logo and everything from that first week. Can you go over this so we can actually see it? I'm on a Mac and not sure if that was why I couldn't follow the instructions given. So, um, so Angela, these were, um, these were intended to be a two-part. The first part, uh, and this would be if you go back two weeks from right now on our YouTube channel, um, is to get you into, uh, actually creating your name logo. And then the second part, which was last, yeah, last week's, uh, it was for showing you where to put those logos and your colors into the system. So, um, I guess if I could show our YouTube channel, I'll, I'll show you real quick. And just maybe confirm that we've got everything set up here correctly. I have to get past my productivity, uh, software here that's telling me not to go to YouTube right now. I'll go ahead and answer one other question here. Uh, sorry if you covered that before Ilka asks, uh, still knew how it works, uh, once the site is created for people to find me, be seen. Okay. So, um, so Ilka, once you have your site created, uh, what you want to do is actually start creating content. Your content is how people find you. Content is blogging. Content is YouTube. Uh, like YouTube videos where people can find you organically. Uh, basically where the organic search or the SEO stuff happens. But then importantly, uh, you know, just in your regular networking and communicating and talking with people, your content is your proof that you know what you're talking about. You're not just somebody who showed up on a page and said, hey, I do this. I know this. You are saying, hey, I do this. I know this. Here's a thing about me talking about this thing and you can go see for it yourself, right? Uh, see, see it for yourself. So that's, that's more or less how the getting found works. And we've got lots of videos on our YouTube channel that talk about stuff like this, ways to get leads. Um, and, and then of course, there's some great, uh, partner courses, for instance, uh, Go For Gold, uh, talks about content strategies and getting out there as well. Putting yourself out there is a topic you can search for on our YouTube channel, which I can now show you guys. And I'll show you really quick. Uh, this is for, um, Angela. Uh, do, 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 let me see. Okay. It's doing it again. I literally just told this not to do this. Sorry, guys. Um, okay. So how to do the steps for the signature logo and add pictures to my website? Okay. So these are both your questions. It might've been Canva that you were confused with and that's totally fine. Uh, Canva even confuses me sometimes. But it's, I, I joke with our team, it's like bad boyfriend. You can't quit. Because if you're, if you don't want to become a graphic designer and use like Adobe tools, um, it really is kind of the best thing that you can use. So, um, so here's, here's what I was talking about here. So part one, which is this one here, your brand guideline and your name logo. This teaches you how to actually use, uh, a brand, create and use a brand guideline, which we have, uh, slides that teach you how to do this. We have a brand guideline template that you can download in Canva. Right here, this is actually created by Jessica here on our team. Uh, so we teach you how to create a brand logo and then how to create, uh, sorry, a brand guideline. And then a name logo, a horizontal and square, uh, and some tips and tricks around that. There are templates for those that are the right resolutions that you'll want. And then the second video in this series actually shows you how to plug it into your site. And so that's this one that is this, uh, wait, is this part two of two? Sorry. This one. All right. So this is the one where we actually talk about where this goes into your site, how you set up your custom colors and that kind of thing. So where there are questions about canvas specifically, ooh, not really qualified. There's a lot of great YouTube content out there where people teach that stuff. Um, we may be able to do some content in the future where we're doing more of a visual walkthrough, but it really is something worth just getting in and kind of playing around with, uh, to figure it out. If you're going to be taking control of your brand, highly recommend you just bite the bullet and get Canva Pro. Uh, just because you have the ability to have teams there. If you're going to be working with someone who's helping you out, you also have the ability to download things that are transparent. It's just you could, you get to do a lot more with it. It's worth it. So hopefully that helps and I'm sorry. Let me see. And in terms of the written instructions, uh, yeah, just let me know. I guess if that's helpful at all, if it's on the canvas side, it really is just a matter of kind of getting in and playing around with it. Uh, and maybe, uh, you know, you guys let us know if, if you'd like for us to actually do some more like, you know, showing you how to do stuff in Canva. Maybe that's something we can do on, uh, on a future work session. Uh, kind of show you how we play around with that. And maybe we'll, maybe we'll do that in the personal branding intensive coming up here. We'll see. All right. So, uh, you guys, 20 past. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And yes, uh, that's Greg, I think she's talking about the video from last week and the week before. Okay. So we do, we have, we have one request for Canva tutorials live. Um, really excited that you guys stuck around today. Thank you for being here. If you want to sign up for a future live review of your work, go to getoiling.com/websitereview. And, uh, get on the list for us to review your site every now and then, like today. Uh, we may open up additional slots so that we can, uh, spend more time with you and less time on the training. So, uh, hey Greg, how's it going?
Been hiding out behind my little oil drop.
Excellent. So, um, so yeah, just, uh, thank you, everybody. Be sure to be back. We're here every Thursday and, uh, if you guys want to say anything to send us off.
Thanks for being here. Uh, appreciate your time. Hopefully you found it useful. I saw a lot of comments and they're saying it was. So that's awesome.
Excellent. All right. Thank you guys so much for being here and we'll see you next time. Take care.